I'd like to call order the Village of Westmont Regular Board Meeting of February the 1st, 2018 at 6 o'clock PM and ask Clerk Simmsky for roll call, please.
Mayor Gunther.
Here.
Clerks here, Trustee Addington.
Here.
Trustee Barker.
Here.
Trustee Barry.
Here.
Trustee Guzzo.
Here.
Trustee Little.
Here.
Trustee Nero.
Here.
Attorney Ziminek.
Here.
Finance Director Parker.
Here.
Village Manager May.
Here.
Would everybody please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everybody here tonight. I've said it before, it's always an exciting night when we can honor our fire department and swearing in a new police officer. But before then, I have opened form. We did not get a request, but now's the time to anybody who would like to address the board for an item that's not on the agenda, now's the time. Okay? Open form is closed. And we'll start with reports. And our first report, I'm going to call Chief Gunther, which is not a report, we get the honor of swearing in our new police officer.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight we are swearing in one of our newest officers, Officer Jeremy Durst. And I see Anna's already off to a good start with Matt being up here at the podium.
Did she say wine?
Jeremy comes to us from the DuPage County Forest Reserve Police where he was a sworn officer for six years. In that capacity, he was a field training officer, firearms instructor, defensive tactics instructor, and he's certified armorer in several weapon platforms. He's also our first, I think, certified Illinois hunter instructor. So, that's a niche kind of a thing he's got going out for him. So, before we get to swearing in, I do have to acknowledge a few people. I'd like to, first of all, thank the Fire and Police Commission for their hard work in hiring Officer Durst. All three commissioners are here tonight. They've had a tremendously busy 2017 into 2018. They just finished up with a promotional list for sergeants, a hiring list for new officers, testing and hiring of new officers, so they've been extremely busy and are doing a great job. Officer Durst in the audience tonight, wife Carissa and daughter Anna, who we can all hear, sitting right over there, rosy little cheeks. And then parents Fritz and Sheri and mother-in-law Mona, so we're all in attendance tonight. Certainly like to acknowledge them. I'd also like to thank all the firemen that showed up for tonight's swearing in of our new police officer. Room is packed. They're on the correct side for the swearing in process. So, with that, Mayor, please do the honors.
That's why I put you first. I ask you to raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Jeremy Durst.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that of the State of Illinois.
And that of the State of Illinois.
That I will, with a positive attitude.
That I will, with a positive attitude.
Obey and support the rules, regulations, and orders.
That I will support the rules, regulations, and orders.
Of the Westmont Police Department. Read the wrong one. I read the wrong one. I read whatever they give me. Right now, here. Now, raise your right hand again. State your name again.
I, Jeremy Durst.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The laws of DuPage County.
The laws of DuPage County.
The Westmont Village Code of Ordinances.
The Westmont Village Code of Ordinances.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties for the office of policeman.
And faithfully obey the.
The duties for the office of policeman.
For the duties of the office of policeman.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
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 And now for the pinning of the badge. So, Carissa's coming to the front to pin her husband. Hopefully on one try.
Without drawing blood.
That's what the firemen are for.
First, I'd like to thank the Police and Fire Commissioners for the opportunity to serve as a Westmont Police Officer. I'd like to thank for their dedication, time, and care that they provide to the village. Thank you to the Village Board and to the Mayor for the opportunity to serve as a police officer for the Village of Westmont. I'd like to thank Chief Gunther for the opportunity to serve under his command. I look forward to starting my career as a Westmont Police Officer. A little bit about myself is that I did grow up in southern Wisconsin, right outside of Addison. I went to college at the University of Stevens Point and got a degree in law enforcement. I also married to my beautiful wife, Carissa, for five years and have a noisy little one-year-old daughter, Anna Grace. I'd like to thank my wife for the support she's given me every day in my career and sacrifices that she makes and continues to make, which allows me to serve as a Westmont Police Officer. And I'd like to thank you all that are involved with the Village of Westmont and the Westmont Police Department. And I look forward to creating my future here and building relationships with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And as tradition, we do have cake and coffee. And tonight we have two cakes and one group of coffee, so hopefully we eat more of our cake than the fire department's cake.
The question is, will you stay for their promotions?
Oh, we're all, nobody's moving.
Okay, good.
We're all good. For public safety.
Are there any shadows in the family, everybody?
At this time, I've called Chief Weiss up to the podium.
Thanks, Mayor and Board. It's a pleasure tonight to come in front of you to promote two individuals on the fire department. But before I do that, I need to recognize a couple people in the audience. We've had a few individuals leave the department in the last year or so. We had a couple people that are retired. And we have a couple of those that are here with us tonight. And first, Inspector Jim Bresjan's here. Jim, can you stand a minute? Jim retired yesterday. Jim retired yesterday. He's 10 years with the fire department as an inspector, but he's had over 40 years in the fire service. So, thank you, Jim, for your service. And then firefighter, driver operator, engineer, Tom Barrett. Can you stand, Tom?
Tom's retiring on his last shift to be next Tuesday, the 6th. Tom's retiring after 39 years with the village and the fire department, so we want to thank him for his service to our community. Thank you, Tom.
Now, tonight, we have come in front of you two individuals that have gone through the promotional testing process, and it's not something easy to get to, and they scored very well. And so, first I want to bring up our Chair of our Public Safety Committee, Trustee Guzzo, and the Mayor and the Manager, if you mind coming up. And we'd like to have Chris Gurlich come forward. Chris?
I'm sure he gave you the right one.
Are we ready? Okay, Chris, I'm going to ask you to raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Chris Gurlich.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that of the State of Illinois.
And that of the State of Illinois.
That I will, with a positive attitude.
That I will work with a positive attitude.
Obey and support the rules, regulations, and orders.
Obey the rules, regulations, and orders.
Of the Westmont Fire Department.
Of the Westmont Fire Department.
And that I will faithfully serve the Village of Westmont.
And that I will faithfully serve the Village of Westmont.
In the discharge of my duties.
In the discharge of my duties.
As a Lieutenant of the Westmont Fire Department.
As a Lieutenant of the Westmont Fire Department.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
You don't get any kiss from me.
Thanks. And we have Chris's family and whoever's going to pin Chris, come up, please.
A little get out. I look around the room and I owe a deep debt to everybody behind me that's on this department. Over the little over 10 years that I've been here, this place has set me up with a great foundation for my career. I worked full-time in Addison as well, and this place has just given me this foundation to take with me anywhere I go. So, once again, thank you to everybody here for all your support. Thank you to all my brothers and sisters on the fire service. You are the reason that I'm here. Thank you.
Okay, Tom. Congratulations. Okay, Mayor, this next promotion is kind of a special promotion because of the 95-year history this year of the fire department. We're going to have our first female captain, and that individual is Lynn Drolli. So Lynn, could you come forward, please?
I state your name.
I, Lynn Drolli.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that of the State of Illinois.
And that of the State of Illinois.
That I will, with a positive attitude.
And that I will, with a positive attitude.
Obey and support the rules, regulations, and orders. Obey and support the rules, regulations, and orders.
Obey and support the rules, regulations, and orders.
Of the Westmont Fire Department.
Of the Westmont Fire Department.
And that, and that I will faithfully serve the Village of Westmont.
And I will faithfully serve the Village of Westmont.
In the discharge of my duties.
In the discharge of my duties.
As Captain of the Westmont Fire Department.
As Captain of the Westmont Fire Department.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
All right, and who do you want to have up to pin your badge?
Bob.
Bob.
Yep.
I love you.
Congrats.
Well, I really didn't have anything ready to say, but like Chris said, actually, this is, everybody helped me. I mean, I want to thank everybody that's behind me in regards for the fire department, the chief, the deputy chiefs, everybody has helped me. I've been here for an awful long time, and instead of saying my brothers and sisters, I'm going to say my kids. Because I have been here a really long time. And I can't, seriously, they're the best family ever, besides my own family, but they are the best family to be in. So, thanks again, I appreciate it.
Okay, Mayor, that concludes our session.
Well, thank you. And one thing I do have to say, the fire department's here to the police department. This past two weeks, I think we've experienced some, probably the largest fires and displacement of residents we've had in a long time. And I've had nothing but favorable comments from every resident about the actions of the fire department. So, along with the police supporting them, I do have to say, congratulations, and it's an honor to be here anytime I can represent you. So, congratulations. Now, everybody can go eat cake. We'll just wait a minute here while everybody has an opportunity to adjourn to the community room before we finish.
Cake sounds good.
Sounds delicious.
Sweet, savory.
Sure, it's the usual stuff.
When is she?
I'm still there.
Again, congratulations to everyone. I also have another item, and I'll ask Larry McIntyre to come to the podium. We have a whole new program that he's going to want to talk about.
Actually, not too much at all. I'll just introduce Amy Quatron, junior high school assistant principal, and she has a new program that Junior High is launching, and would like to have her come up and tell you all about it because it's going to involve getting the community together, so.
Thank you.
I am not Amy Quatron. My name is John Jonek. I'm the principal of Westmont Junior High School. Good evening to the Village Board, to the manager and Mayor. Thank you for having us here to talk about this new program. As I said, I'm John Jonek. This is Ms. Amy Quatron. She's the assistant principal of Westmont Junior High School. She's also the Assistant Principal of the Year for DuPage County and also the Assistant Principal for the State of Illinois. So, congratulations, Amy. Also with me tonight is the Student Council President for Westmont Junior High School, Pranav Miswanath. And I believe soon he'll be the, not only the Student Council President, but possibly the President of the United States.
Operator, yeah.
We all know that. So, we wanted to talk to you a little bit tonight in regards to an upcoming event that we have in April. This February, we have many things going on with Pizza Wars. We have some frozen film festival filming that's going to happen on February 10th in the downtown area. And then at Hollywood Boulevard, there's going to be the filming that's going to take place at Hollywood Boulevard. But we'd like to talk to you about April 17th, there's going to be community talks, and that's community talks at Westmont Junior High School. And this event is an enrichment class that Amy and I are going to be teaching in regards to our students. It is about calls to action within our community, problems that we would like to see solved. And so, it's going to be within the Village of Westmont, and we like to work with adults within the community to make some of these things come to life, these calls to action come to life. The students are going to research their call, they're going to create a TED Talk based on that call, and present it to the community on April 17th. Our hopes are that they will be able to lean on some of the attendees that night and be able to create that action plan along with those attendees and make those take place. And Ms. Amy Quatron.
Even though the class hasn't started just yet, interested students have been brainstorming potential ideas as to how to make our community more green, how to bring more diverse cultural events into our village, and of course, the ever-popular with middle school students, how to bridge the bipartisan divide at the local level, and I'm sure you can imagine who came up with that idea. Pranav. These students are excited to have the opportunity to strengthen their leadership, presentation, problem-solving, and teamwork skills.
Greetings, Mr. Mayor, Village Board members, and fellow citizens. You know, as Mr. Jonek and Ms. Quatron said, this is a fantastic learning opportunity for our students. This project, it allows our students to go out in the community and experience the real life of Westmont. You know, one of the great things is, we reiterate that concept of, I see areas of improvement all around me. How do I make that better? And by continuing to stress that concept throughout the research process, we are making better, prepared global citizens to make the world better. And it's awesome because we're providing real-life experience. So, we would really appreciate your help because, as Mr. Jonek said, we will be relying on our fellow community members for their help in making our calls to action that we researched kind of become a reality. And you guys know so much about the community, and we'd really appreciate your help. I'm so thankful to Mr. Jonek and Ms. Quatron for creating this opportunity, and I look forward to seeing the possibilities it has in the future.
Okay. So, again, that's April 17th. It's going to be 6 o'clock until 7:30 at Westmont Junior High School. Listen to this, it is a catered dinner, so that's going to be courtesy of Westmont Junior High School. There's going to be a sign-up. It's distributed through social media. That's going to be in March. We'll start putting out the sign-out. And all community members are encouraged to attend. We'd love to have you here, have you there, and your expertise.
And in the meantime, a few of our students may be reaching out to some of you with questions they may have about their call to action. We're going to have them start their research by examining the village's strategic plan. So, we're anticipating that they probably will have some questions for you. We hope that you will all help to participate. Thank you. Any questions?
No, but while you're here, we'd like to present you with something. And stole my thunder. We're very proud of the fact that you've been named the Vice Principal of State of Illinois. And we've been honored to have our principal of the high school, I understand, DuPage County Principal, Junior High Principal of the Year last year. So, we're proud of everybody that accomplishes things in our community. So, we'd like to present you with the Community Appreciation Award on behalf of the Gojoy Club for all you do.
And then if we could do one more shadow, I could bring up Super Kenny Carey.
Hey, Mayor.
Yes.
One more comment.
Yep.
She's homegrown.
Yes.
Went through Westmont Junior High and high in the other schools, so we're very proud of Amy.
Thank you.
All right, ready, here we go. One more. Before Amy leaves, just to give you a little bit more credit, you're actively involved in a number of community events and activities, and I know that you're on the Special Events Corporation Board. So, I'm happy that you're getting involved in every aspect of the community. Thank you. All right, we'll go to the Clerk Simmsky.
What a night.
Yeah, top that.
Congratulations to everyone tonight. What a fabulous show. I mean, the policemen, that fire department, so proud of you guys and the hard week you've had, and you have done so well. Amy, of course, an outstanding citizen in our town, outstanding. I'm almost speechless about this. I just am amazed at the wonderful people we have in this town and our employees. So, I can't think, I would think I'm supposed to announce that we'll be closed on.
President's Day.
President's Day, yes, April.
15th.
February 19th.
Or February.
April 19th, or February 19th, April. Where did I come up with April? So, I want to announce that. I want to congratulate the Mayor on his new grandson.
Thank you.
Hugo. So, we're all so happy for you, we know you have your grandkids.
Yep.
And it keeps you out of trouble.
Yes.
And wish everybody a very happy Valentine's Day.
Thank you. Trustee Barry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our next EDC meeting is scheduled for March 7th, and that's held in the meeting room right behind us here. And I think we're going to have Marker School that's going to have a presentation on some of their future plans. Also, I think Larry's going to come up. We have a special guest today, Mark Zead from the Fremont Bar and Grill. He's going to tell us about his new place. And I've had the opportunity to go there, and I was telling Mark that I had a very picky friend with me, and he gave it the thumbs up. So, if you can get by him, you'll be able to get past anybody. So, it was a great experience we had. So, Mark, please tell us about you.
Well, we've been open for about four and a half weeks now. And thanks to the Building Department of Westmont, they really helped me out with the build-out. We had problems or questions. And the food is all homemade, other than like four items that there that we don't make homemade. And the feedback from the community has been great. They love the food. Service has been good, and I'd like to invite you all to the grand opening on the 8th when we do the ribbon cutting with the man. Some of you've got the menu in front of you, and the menu's online, or our Facebook page also has it. So, I'd like to say thanks for the opportunity you guys gave me to open up the bar and grill at Westmont. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. And then also, Larry, did you want to say anything about Restaurant Week or just roll with it? This is exciting, always Restaurant Week.
Thank you, Trustee Barry. Yes, please mark your calendars for March 2nd through the 11th for our Second Annual Westmont Restaurant Week. Right now, we are finalizing participation. We're going to have 20-some restaurants, and the menus will be going online sometime later next week. So, keep your eyes open for a lot of great special. So, keep your eyes open for a lot of great special meals throughout the entire community. So, always part of our shop, dine and discover Westmont. Thank you.
And Larry, where, this is our second year for this, or third, is it?
This is our second year for the Westmont Restaurant Week. It is our third year. Shortly thereafter, we'll follow up with a Reader's Choice Program where residents and guests, anybody actually who frequents our restaurants, can vote for their favorite restaurant. And that will be a little bit later in April. So, that will be our third year doing that, so.
Great, great. A lot of exciting things coming up. And we heard tonight from Alicia that Zazos is hoping to open on February 15th, and that's on Ogden Avenue. And I know everyone's excited to see that building up and running again. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Trustee Guzzo.
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I would like to invite up Chief Weiss to talk about the recent fires and the excellent work of our fire personnel to combat those emergencies.
Thank you, Trustee Guzzo. Yes, to say the least, the fire department's been very busy, and police and all our staff, the last couple of weeks or so. As you know, a few weeks ago, we had a fire at our dual-owned town around 5:00 in the morning. That three sprinkler heads went off from the fire, and sprinkler heads controlled the fire. We didn't have to put much water on the fire, but it caused a lot of major damage, as you can imagine, inside a grocery store. And so, we had a large dollar loss there. But we were able to get them back up and running again within 36 hours, so that was good. They turned things around pretty quick. This last Saturday at 73 West Piers Drive, we got a report of apartment fire. And when first units arrived, we had fire through the roof. This fire had been burning for a while. Those buildings there are much older buildings. Alarm systems are 45 years old. They just had pull stations in the stairwells and isolated heat detectors in common areas. So, there's no smoke detectors or anything in that building. We were alerted by 911 caused by the residents. But we had 20 fire departments that came to that fire. It was a second alarm fire, and somewhere around 60 firefighters there. We had no injuries at that fire, residents-wise or firefighters-wise. We did rescue four cats out of the building, and the residents were very happy with that. But it was a very stubborn fire. And once they get up in the roof area and they start burning across the roofs, sometimes it's very hard to stop them. So, we had to use aerial devices to put the major part of the fire out. And then this, the other night at quarter to 2:00 in the morning, we had a major apartment fire at 6703 South Park. 18-unit apartment building. We did get a local fire alarm. We responded to a fire alarm. On the way there, dispatch got 911 calls from the residents that there was a fire in the building. And they upgraded to general alarm. Now Captain Drouly was on the first engine in, reported heavy fire on the second, third floor, and fire through the roof when they arrived. And they went up to a box alarm. That fire ended up going to a third alarm fire. Somewhere around 30 fire departments there and 90 to 100 firefighters. There's about a total of 30 families that were displaced between the two apartment fires. And somewhere between the three fires, somewhere around $6 million in fire loss in a two-week period. That's very high for us and our community, but it could have been much worse. The, I want to, one special note, the People's Resource Center is now taking... People can contact them to help the displaced families. You can contact them to give them assistance. So, through our People's Resource Center. The, I have to tell you, I'm very proud of, just not the fire department, but our other departments that assisted us on both these fires were outstanding. There's a lot of things that has to happen behind the scene when we have these type of fires, and the police department was outstanding. Our EMAT team came out for both fires and assisted the police with crowd and traffic control. Our building commissioner came out on Saturday and was out there on Piers Drive for four hours, and then came out at 2:00 in the morning and was out there four hours with us. So, we really appreciate Jason and the group from our Economic Development. Public Works was called out. They came out right away. And Public Works put salt down for us and got that truck in the areas that I wouldn't even imagine that you could get them into. But then an outstanding job of getting salt down because we flowed a lot of water at the fire on Park Drive. We had three aerial devices up in the air flowing, and everything was ice. The sidewalks, the streets, the parking lots. Public Works helped us out greatly. And we had our chaplain from the fire department that came out and assisted us with residents. Rick Cross came out at both fires. We were fortunate enough to have clubhouses at both fires, so we moved the residents there and got a lot of things taken care of there. But very proud of all the fire personnel. They did an outstanding job. They worked as a team, worked with all our staff that came out. We appreciate the other staff that comes out because Larry Kaufman was out and Jason and everybody. They worked on the scenes, were working with management, maintenance, locating the residents, helping them. All those type of things that need to be done when we have these type of fires. So, again, just want to appreciate everybody that, you know, everything that they did. And we're very fortunate not to have, there's twice, twice at the fire on West Pier, we had to pull all the firefighters out of the building because of collapse on the third floor. And once, we pulled them out on South Park. But they're tough fires once they get in the roof, and the only way to put them out is aggressively flow a lot of large water. And then Deputy Chief Conley was operations at the South Park fire, and he controlled getting crews. Once we got the main roof knocked down, getting crews upstairs, pulling the ceiling, and stopping the fire from going to the whole building. So, that was great, great job by everybody and great work. And all the surrounding departments that came, everybody worked as a team, and it was just like clockwork. So, just appreciate the mayor and the board and the village's support on everything, with the fire department and all our staff. Anybody have any questions?
No.
Okay.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay, continuing on with my report, to kind of go in line with what the chief said about the People's Resource Center. If anyone needs to get ahold of them, they can contact Christina LaPage. She is the PRC Director of Basic Programs. Her number is 630-384-1335. Another item I would like to bring up tonight is the Citizens Fire Academy class. We'll be starting April 5th. It runs through May 10th. If you're interested or would like to sign up, westmont.illinois.gov. I am happy to say I was in the first class ever. We'll not tell you how long ago that was. It is a great opportunity to see how the fire department works and to just learn a lot of important information and things that you will take through the rest of your life. We are supposed to get snow Saturday, so a reminder, please keep those fire hydrants clean of snow. Let's help the fire department out. We hope we never have to use it, but let's, everybody kind of work together to do that. And then on a personal note, I would like to thank the mayor and the manager for the opportunity to chair the Public Safety Committee. Today, it was an honor to, I'm gonna, okay. Today, it was an honor to be included in the promotions. It's come full circle. For those of you who don't know, my dad was Frank Johannick. He was on the fire department for 43 years, chief 25 years, and I just want to say thank you. And that's all I have, Mayor.
You're welcome. You're welcome. I don't know if we'll follow that with Trustee Eddington or not. Say, I guess we will. Trustee Eddington.
How do you follow that?
I'm hoping you don't.
Just a real couple of real fast things. Next Friday is Westmont Lions Club Reverse Raffle chaired by Lion Ron Gunther. If anybody wants tickets, and I know some of you already have, but if you don't, you can see Lion Ginny, or Lion Ron, or myself, or Lion Bob Fleck over at the Park District. And we would be...
Lion Forrest.
Or Larry Forrest.
Or Lion Larry sitting back there, or Lion Tom who's outside. But, you know, we'd be more than honored to sell you a ticket.
We get a new person to pull the balls this time?
We'll get somebody good. We'll get somebody good.
All right, thank you.
Marker School system is having a referendum. Steve, have they contacted us about coming to our village board meeting?
They have that, and I think we'll see them at the next Economic Development Committee.
Well, I think when 201 was doing theirs, I think we allowed them to come and make a brief presentation, so, you know.
They've inquired, yes.
Okay. And then the only thing I have is to just, congratulations to Johnny Blitzes. They had their grand opening last week, and they're doing a real good job, and a lot of nice new restaurants in town. So, when you're hungry and don't want to cook for yourself, please visit one of ours. And that's it, sir.
Well, thank you. Trustee Barker.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of quick things this evening. On Monday evening, February 5th, the EIC will meet at the library at 6:00 PM. And at this time, we're promoting the annual Green Speaker Series with events in March, April, and May. So, follow that program at the library, put on by the folks at the EIC. And then our Westmont First meeting for February, because of the holiday, will be moved to February 26th at 6:00 PM. And I have another note there with the Westmont First is we had permission from the village for to set up a business publicity grant. And that information is online for anybody that wants to take advantage of that to help with any new events or new programs that they would like to bring into the village through their business. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Little.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of items. The Frozen Film Festival will be held February 17th. It's a Saturday at the Hollywood Boulevard at 75th and Main Street in Downers Grove. These are films that have been made by the junior high school students. So, it's always a wonderful free event to turn out for and see how creative our children are becoming. PVPN's production of Into the Woods is February 22nd through the 24th at the Westview Junior High. And more information, you can get through the Park District at 630-963-5252. Another item is Westmont Special Events is moving forward with the St. Patty's Day Local Pub Tour called the Irish Gig and Swig. The date is set for Saturday, March 10th, from 2:00 to 6:00 PM. And there are four participating locations, DJ Sports Bar and Grill, Uptown Tavern, Neat Kitchen and Bar at Myth and Legend Brewery. There will be sign-up online at westmontevents.com, and you'll be able to, for a minimum fee of $15, you'll be able to go through each of these four establishments, and they have an activity provided. There's a special food and maybe a special drink, not sure, but those are coming up. And then last on my list is Administration Finance Committee meeting was held at 4:30 this evening. And some of the items that we heard were resolution on IMRF that we'll be voting on tonight. Budget discussions started on landscaping, maintenance, and CBD, streetscape, new village hires, and a retirement, pod code enforcement. And if you want to know more, I encourage you to come out the first Thursday, or first Thursday meeting of every month, before 30 in this room. Thank you, Mayor.
Well, thank you. And Trustee Nero.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few items. Our next Public Works Committee will be March 15th. And I also want to remind everybody that you can check out a 2017 Public Works Project Recap on our website. Highlights all the projects that the village has been involved with last year. And then lastly, I just again want to thank the police and fire for all their hard work and all the departments that were involved in the unfortunate events we've had. And also Assistant Principal Quattrone, what a great job. And Principal Jonak as well for this great program that they're putting together. I know we've talked about getting the schools involved more in local government. That's exactly what we're asking. So, it's great to see him taking the charge. And I look forward to it. Should be a fun night. That's all I have. Thank you, sir.
Well, thank you. Moving on the agenda, items to remove from the consent agenda. Does any board member have any item? If not, I'd ask Manager May to please read.
First on the consent agenda is Village Board Minutes. Board to consider approving the minutes of the village board meeting held January 18, 2018. It's followed by Finance Ordinance Number 19, the amount of $990,265.62. We have three purchase orders. The first is Westtown Mechanical, $51,697. Represents replacement of two HVAC units. You see in the description there is we've already authorized the replacement of it, but they continued to shop after this authorization and found the same equipment for, you know, a cheaper price. So, I was glad to see that. Second is Baxter Woodman, $32,500. This is to begin the engineering design work on the Bur Oak Avenue, Bur Oak Drive water main. Bur Oak Avenue, isn't it? Well, the water main down Bur Oak. Third purchase order is Westmont Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau. It's the first of two payments in the amount of $20,875 for the tourism services. The total of the three purchase orders is $105,072. Brings the total of purchase orders and Finance Ordinance Number 19 to a total of $1,095,337.62. And that is the consent agenda.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Eddington.
Second, Little.
Motion made in second to approve. Any questions? Sing them, roll call, please.
Trustee Eddington.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee New.
Yes. Motion is approved. New business, 24 North Cass Avenue, Potbelly Pub. Board to consider ordinance approving a downtown development grant request in the amount of $1,936 for Potbelly Pub in the B1 Limited Business District. Director Ziegler.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a straightforward request for an awning. It has already been stalled, so you can see it up in the downtown. The business has obviously been open longer than a year, so they would get the grant money right away if approved. We have only 520 remaining in the facade grant for this year, which I think is great. That means people are taking advantage of it and making improvements to their facades. That being said, because of the requirement for businesses to be open longer than a year, it also gives us a little bit more flexibility, and we've been encouraging people to keep applying. So, we're just happy to see how the facade has benefited local business owners in the downtown.
So, Joe, when we make them wait a year for the approval, that money's set aside in this budget?
Yeah. Spencer, do you want to?
We will typically set it aside if there's, excuse me, if there's amounts that have not been provided to them and they haven't met the requirements, we'll actually expense it in the year when they do. But we'll make sure we set aside enough money to cover it.
So, it comes out of this fiscal year's...
It's planned for, and then it depends on how it would, how the grant moves forward, if that's continued to be approved by the board through the budget cycle.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Eddington. Second.
Barry. I just would comment that...
Yeah, on the question.
I hate for this awning to three times. No, but that whole block is looking so nice now. It's nice to see activity and improvement all the way through there. And at least to myself, it seems drastically noticeable. So, hats off to you and your staff there.
Thanks. Yeah, we're also excited about all the businesses that have been doing much more open storefronts. And I try to compliment them when I see them at events through the chamber to say, you know, we appreciate you guys having open storefronts and, you know, inviting people to look in and doing window displays and holiday decorations. So, that is all contributing to the downtown.
Any additional? Sing them, roll call, please.
Trustee Eddington.
Mm-hmm.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business, B, Administrative Adjudication Tax Amendment. Board to consider ordinance approving a tax amendment to the municipal code to establish an administrative adjudication system. And I'm going to let Director Ziegler give us more information.
Thank you, Mayor. I am very excited to present this to you. As you know, we've been working on this for the past year, going back and forth with Anne Marie Perez, that works with John Zemanek. She has some experience because she's an adjudicator at Oakbrook. So, she's very familiar with the process, and we have also investigated how it works in other communities. So, we went over to Claridin Hills, and we've talked to Lombard, Warrenville. You know, just talked about all the hiccups that people have, how we can make the process move smoothly for us. And we interviewed an administrative adjudicator, and he told us, you know, just his experience and just recommendations. We feel like we have a very good framework for setting this up. It's going to save us money. It should be easier for residents, and we recommend approval.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Eddington.
Second. Nero. Motion made in second. On the question.
Has there been any feedback from DuPage County as these towns do this? Because I think it takes away, to some extent, of revenue. So, I'm just wondering if they, but at the same time, we're also eliminating a ton of traffic through their court system.
You know, there's a simultaneous but opposite problem that the way that these are administered in the court, bottom line is, is the revenue that should be coming back to the municipality isn't. So, if there's a trend, it's, you know, municipalities bringing adjudication back in-house to have, to keep control over that and keep it out of that court system while we can.
Which could delay things forever anyway. So, I think this is absolutely the way to go. go.
Trustee Eddington, I also have a funny story related to that. Noriel and I met with DuPage County this week to talk about the nadatorium project and engineering, and we happened to mention that we were working on administrative adjudication, and they are actually starting their own administrative, or they have started their own administrative adjudication for DuPage County. So I thought that was funny, that they get things.
Get that out of their own court system.
Yeah, they take it out of their own court system, so it's faster for them, too.
Makes sense.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Eddington.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Motion passes. New Business C, Approve Agreement with Aaron Renkey. Board to consider ordinance approving agreement with Aaron Renkey to act as Westmont's administrative adjudication hearing officer. Director Ziegler.
Thank you, Mayor. As I mentioned with the previous item, staff saw several administrative adjudication hearings, and Mr. Renkey oversees the one in Claritin Hills, and we were very impressed with how he is very amenable to listening to residents, but he also has a very firm demeanor and, you know, runs everything very smoothly. So we were very impressed with his presentation, and we had set aside the expectation that we'd be spending, I think, $500 per administrative adjudication hearing, which is well worth the money considering how much we're losing through the DuPage County system. And he actually said that because he does several administrative adjudication hearings in the nearby area, he would only charge us 250 for the first hour because he'd be, you know, coming from different communities. So we felt like that was a very valuable resource, and we'd like to take advantage of that. We also suggested having a run-through session so that our staff sees how it should go, and he can make pointers to us just about how to make sure everything was, moves smoothly for the first session.
Have a motion.
Oh, yeah, let's make a motion to approve. Second, Barker.
Motion made in second to approve. On the question.
Just a point of clarification, Mayor. The adjudication administrative, administration system ordinance that you just passed provides that the manager shall appoint the hearing officer, but because they're being considered at the same meeting and that ordinance isn't effective until signed, we decided to have this hearing officer approved by the board. The manager does have the authority to terminate the work of that hearing officer and appoint new hearing officers moving forward.
Thank you. John, would this make situations like we've had with some of these properties around town, would this be that up, or does that still have to go to DuPage County?
Those would still have to go to DuPage County. If you have a dangerous and unsafe building, that statute is specifically excluded from the administrative adjudication ordinance. But all the other routine code stuff, and trust me, there are many that drag out forever, this should speed up the process for all of those.
Thanks.
We also asked him about that. I said, are there things that we should not be sending to you? And that's exactly what he said about the dangerous, unsafe structures. But I was thinking about potential condemnations, if that's something that's too much for this. And he said that it makes sense to go through administrative adjudication first before going to House Court of DuPage County, just to show that you've tried to work with somebody, and then move it forward from there.
Harold Storage Facilities can probably go to this guy.
I'd like to also just congratulate staff on the work that they put into this. You know, we heard about it recently, and it's already happening. It'll be a benefit to the community.
Thank you.
Maybe somewhere down the road, too, we can do a little bit of an informational thing through the newsletter process of let people know, you know, that we've got a new process in town. From the other side of the coin, I guess, John, that doesn't preclude a person who's received a ticket, they still bring, if they wanted to, they could still bring their own representation?
Yes, they can absolutely be represented by an attorney. They can present evidence. They can ask the, they can ask for continuance and ask for the subpoenaing of witnesses. And then if they're unhappy with the result, they can file an administrative appeal to the circuit court.
Okay. So there's still, the process works.
There's still due process, yeah.
Thank you so much.
Just no continence? Seeing them roll call, please.
Trustee Eddington.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Newell.
Yes. Motion passes.
Thank you.
New Business D, Approve Contract with Thompson Elevator Inspection Services, Incorporated. Board to consider ordinance approving agreement with Thompson Elevator Inspection Service, Incorporated, to perform elevator inspections. Chief Weiss.
Thank you, Mayor. The Fire Department's requesting the village enter into a contract with Thompson Elevator Inspection Services, Inc., as part of its opt-out of the Office's State Fire Marshal's Administrative Elevator Safety Program. In your last board meeting, we passed the ordinance entered into this program, but now we had to have a third-party company service that will conduct us to the inspections. We did send out, I believe, three companies. Two of them sent back, said that they wouldn't be able to take on the village of Westmont, and Thompson was the only one that said that they would be able to take care of it.
Have a motion.
Motion to approve, Eddington.
Second, Guzzo.
Motion made in second to approve. Any additional comments, questions?
Sorry, is this the, instead of having someone on staff or in the village certified to inspect?
Yeah, you know, by, the State Fire Marshal used to do it, and then they had their inspectors that would come out. You know, we do not have anybody that's certified, certified elevators and inspect them. So we had to do this sort of third-party company.
How long does certification take for this?
You know, I would have to get back to you on that, and I can do that, but I'm not sure about getting that certification. Joe, do you know anything about certification for the elevator? No? Okay.
Okay.
We'll find that out. I'll get back to you.
Thank you.
The fees are passed through?
Yes.
Think I knew that.
Any additional? Roll call, please.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Eddington.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Motion passes. New Business E, IMRF Resolution. Board to consider a resolution to include cash payments related to health insurance as the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund earnings. Director Parker.
This is an item that was discussed at the Administration Finance Committee meeting. It's really a housekeeping item. IMRF has passed a resolution changing the way they view some of the compensation that employees have received. And so in order to continue to treat it the same way we have been, we just need to pass this resolution to continue the same method we've been doing.
So this, we're going to continue to have the same, okay.
Yes. This allows it to be pensionable income, so that's.
The difference.
From their view, right.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Little.
Second, Nero.
Motion made in second. On the question. Seeing them roll call, please.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Eddington.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes. Motion passes. Miscellaneous. I have, oh.
I have one quick item. None of us mentioned it, but we went to the dispatch center the other day, and it is magnificent. I mean, you are so amazed at that center. You're just, and Addison did a wonderful job. I give them all the credit in the world.
Yeah, I had to beg out. I had to babysit.
Well, it was, well, you were a little busy, too.
And I have one quick item. On Saturday, this Saturday, February 3rd, there'll be a celebration of life for Sandra Smith, who was a park commissioner.
38, 39 years?
37, 38 years. It'll be at the administrative office, 55 East Richmond. Everybody is welcome to attend, and that's all I have. Anybody else?
What time?
One to three.
Yeah. The only other thing, just to make mention, when you guys, when you see Patty's weekly report, be sure you stay on top of the stuff that's coming up from mayors and managers and from Illinois Municipal League. Because this is an election year, you're going to see unusual bills, and some of them are things that we need to oppose. So just stay on top of everything as much as you can, and I will with the mayor and with Steve as I hear more. It's going to be interesting.
All right. I do need a motion to adjourn the executive session to discuss the sale of real estate by the village pursuant to Section 2C6 of the Open Meetings Act and the purchase of real estate for the use of the village pursuant to Section 2C5 of the Open Meetings Act. Do I have a motion?
Motion to go into executive session for the two purposes stated?
Second. Motion made in second. Roll call, please.
Trustee Eddington.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Again, after the executive session will be no further business, and I will adjourn a meeting at that time. So I thank everybody for coming.